For August 6th to order, please have a roll call. Jeanette?
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Burbank.
Here.
Rainey.
Here.
Stenby.
Churlson.
Here.
Dodson.
Here.
Abraham.
Here.
Mayor Coontz.
Here.
We have six of the council and the mayor present.
Thank you. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I want to thank everyone for coming tonight for this momentous occasion, but I did have some eye surgery last week and I am still having some difficulty reading, so I'm going to turn it over to our vice president to conduct the meeting tonight.
Good evening, everyone. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. There are no changes that I know of.
So moved.
Motion by Raymond. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Les. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is Chief Hiller. You have a whole bunch of duties to do here tonight, wherever you are. He's hiding already.
Plenty of room back here, people, if you want. There's some chairs.
There's more room in back here.
You're up, chief.
Well, that's very timely. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming. Tonight we have swearing in of new officers and we have citizen commendations and officer commendations. So feel free to bear with us. It'll be a short prelude to the council meeting this evening. So if Judge Patel could do us the honor and come forward and read the oath.
Good evening. Congratulations. It's wonderful that I can be here to swear you in for your oath of office. And we'll start off by having you raise your right hand. Aye. Please state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota,
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The laws of the City of Oatana,
The laws of the City of Oatana.
And that it will faithfully
And faithfully.
and impartially
And impartially.
discharge the duties of the office of
Discharge the duties of the office of
patrol officer
Patrol officer.
of the City of Oatana
Of the City of Oatana.
to which I've been hired
To which I've been hired.
to the best of my knowledge and ability
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
We have the tradition called pinning a badge, so if the individuals would like to softly and gently pin the badge on the new officers, it'd be wonderful if you'd come forward.
Couple years. Very experienced.
And many of you are aware, we do have a chaplain's opere with the Oatana Police Department. We're quite proud of the organization. This would be a fitting time for Chaplain Carlson to come forward and say the blessing over the in-laws.
First of all, let me congratulate you and let me thank you for the service that you have been doing and especially the service that you will be doing in serving our community, in serving us, in serving us the people. Shall we pray? Our heavenly Father, as we gather together tonight, we thank you for your sovereign wisdom and we thank you for your sovereign placement of these men and this woman into this position as a police officer. And we thank you for them. We thank you for their willingness to come and submit themselves to serve us in this way. And as we pray, we pray for Melissa Michael and for Andrew Van Oostdale and for John Patterson and for Jesse Akerson. We pray for these officers now as they go now into service to serve our community. We pray that you would bless them with your wisdom. We pray that as they put on the uniform and go out into the field each day that you would bless them with safety and protection and guidance along the way. We pray too for their families. We pray too that you would give them peace and allow them to know the joy it is of enabling their family member here to serve us in this way. And so we commit these three men and this one woman to your care and keeping. And we look forward to what they're going to do as they serve us in this community and in this area. We pray these things in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Congratulations.
We'll move to the citizen commendations. If Mr. and Mrs. Krueger were to come forward, that'd be wonderful. They're a little nervous, so can I give a little bit of a This is one of these incidents that happened in our community that we don't run command, but at the same time we're super proud of. I'd just like to take a moment to read this. Jonathan Paul Krueger. Let me start from the beginning. This certificate of recognition is awarded to Mr. and Mrs. Krueger for outstanding citizen involvement on Tuesday, February 19, 2002. JP and his wife Catherine ride home from a family sporting event. As they drove their car into the garage, they observed an adult male exiting their residence into their attached garage. The suspect ran out of their garage with a red purse. Not yours, JP. JP and Catherine pursued the suspect on foot. JP tackled the suspect in the front yard. They detained the suspect until law enforcement officials arrived on scene. JP and Catherine both sustained injuries from their clash with the burglar. Officers located the Kruegers' personal belongings in a nearby vehicle. As the case investigation progressed, prior burglaries were solved and property was recovered. JP and Catherine are to be commended for their instinctive response, for their duty to community, and for their willingness to persevere under difficult circumstances. They have set a wonderful example for their fellow citizens and they are admired by the law enforcement professionals at the Oatana Police Department. And now I'd like to have Sergeant Duchesne, Officer Cooper, Officer Schiefer, Officer Hazer, Officer Hennessy, and Officer Akerson come forward, please. I'm going to read this commendation as a group because it was certainly a team effort. So this class de-commendation is awarded to these fine gentlemen for outstanding performance on June 1st, 2013. They responded to a motor vehicle accident. An adult male had exited his vehicle and fled to a nearby wooded area. They approached the adult male involved in the accident. The adult male referenced his nine-millimeter handgun on this person and expressed ideologies of suicide by cop. They responded with a sound tactical approach, making sure the response team was not placed in a compromising situation. Team's tactical approach was further complemented by their verbal communication and a crisis response directly impacted and influenced by the mental health condition of the adult male. The response, preliminary apprehension, negotiations, and investigative follow-up most certainly prevented an already charged atmosphere from further escalation or personal injury. They are to be commended for their instinctive actions, sound tactical approach, and effective communication skills that proved to be excellent and effective under difficult circumstances. Congratulations. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you so very much for your time this evening. You folks have a great council meeting. We'll be doing what we do best. We'll be having coffee and cake in the
Thank you, chief. 1.7, financial report. Recap of bills over $20,000. Our $142,642 to Don Borneke Construction for the Northwest Industrial Park Pond Pay Estimate Number One. $105,341 to Hassleton Construction for the East Broadway Payment Estimate Number Three. $263,302 to James Brother Construction for the 12th Avenue Northwest Payment Estimate Number Two. $304,760 to Minger Construction 2013 Utility and Street Project Payment Estimate Number One. $25,362 to the Olmstead HRA. This is January 3rd, June 2013 Bridges Payments. $20,191 to the Oatana Area Chamber of Commerce. It's a 95% June lodging tax. $78,738 to R&amp;K Electric for generators, which is to be reimbursed by grant funds. And $68,562 to Wenzel Construction for the Park Drive Sanitary Sewer Relocation Payment Estimate Number Four. And other expenditures of $206,067 for a total of $1,214,967. And the August 1st Section 8 payments of $63,869 for a grand total of $1,278,836. What are the council's wishes on the bills?
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Motion by Councilman Kevin. Second?
Second.
Second by Nate. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the consent agenda, and that is a compilation of minutes, licenses and permits, board and commission minutes, department reports, event permits, contracts, and miscellaneous items, all grouped together for one motion. What are the council's wishes on the consent agenda?
So moved, we approve.
Motion by Raymond. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Is there any discussion on any of these items?
Yes. I would like to check on, again, I'm having difficulty reading it, but on
2.7?
No, the MDA, the last one, 2.7.1.
To pass the boot fundraiser?
Right. I was just wondering if anybody is here to discuss that, what that's about.
I can certainly, the chief is on vacation this week and had discussed this matter with me prior to the meeting. It wouldn't, I think they partnered with the Muscular Dystrophy Association in fire departments across the country to pass the boot. It's a new campaign or I guess one they've been doing for years. And this was the idea of the chief how to do it. Typically, when they pass the boot, some departments had done that in the street, you know, walking amongst the traffic, and we didn't feel that was safe or recommended. So the chief came up with an alternative to have the fire department do this on their off time, walking throughout Central Park and to raise money for the Muscular Dystrophy Association.
No, I understand that part of it, but what I'm looking at is the timeframe. It's like three days? It vacates all the parking around the park for three days?
You know, they're not going to close the street and it may be placed in the parking areas for additional safety, so I don't know that they're necessarily going to be, you know, blocking.
No, I don't think it, you know, as I read it, it didn't indicate that it was blocking the street, but it was taking the parking away, which Federated uses two sides of the park and businesses use the other two sides. To restrict parking there for three days may be a hardship for some of them.
Okay.
And that's what I'm wondering about.
Well, you know what? Let me visit with the department and I don't know if they're going to do it during a certain, you know, hour or two of the day, if it's just over the lunch hour. That was kind of my understanding. It wasn't an all-day, you know, thing where they'd be walking around. It was a certain period of time. So let me just verify that and if we can address the parking concerns, if you would pass it contingent upon that.
Chris, could you address what hours are going to be out there? I didn't read
I need to verify that and I'll get back to
Didn't read that into the thing, what hours
Right.
They were going to be out there with the booth. They had the booth. It's an Easton White project. They've been doing it for years. Fire Department Easton White has given billions of dollars to MDA's.
It's for this Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
Right. So I'll verify the times on that and if, you know, I'm sure it's just for an hour, you know, it's not, certainly not
I think we didn't want to see all the parking tied up for three days.
Oh, no. Right. Oh, I understand. And they're not going to walk around for eight hours, you know, so.
It has been approved and seconded, so with that, just like a clarification.
Yes, I will communicate that back to council.
Thank you.
Any other questions? There be none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to action items. 3.2.1, the 2013 Sanitary Sewer Water Main and Street Construction Project Number One Change Order. And we'll go to Kyle for that.
Good evening. This change order in the amount of $34,442, this represents a number of items and I've detailed them out. I'll highlight a few. We had to switch to seed instead of sod. We had some unmarked water main, some modifications to the sanitary sewer that we realized once we had the street opened, some schedule changes, and then some changes to the storm sewer that had planned. So a number of different items and the total is $34,442. Staff recommends approval.
Are there any questions for Kyle on this? Les?
Again, I have one question. Is the sod the cost of about $4,000 for seeding?
Yeah. We weren't able to get sod in time
Okay.
for the, to stabilize by the ravine. It was an expensive seeding project, but it was a timing issue and with the wet spring and a number of other issues with sod, we weren't able to get it when we needed it, so we had to do a change order for the seed.
But there must have been some cost in there for sod that would be reimbursed back?
Yeah, there was a savings on the sod. I don't have that number.
Okay.
But it probably was about equal to the cost of the seed.
Okay.
What are the council's wishes?
Move for approval.
A motion made by Les. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. Any other questions? Discussion?
No.
Because Kevin.
Kevin, not Nate.
Kevin, oh, I'm sorry.
That's right.
See, I'm not used to sitting here. That's my problem. Any other discussion? There be none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is 3.2.2, 2013 Utility and Street Project Number One Change Order. And back to you, Kyle.
This is the section of street along Mackinac from Truman to Lincoln. We have a six-inch ductile iron force main in this stretch of street that we had not planned to replace as part of the street construction project. However, before we started construction, we had a break on the force main and realized that we should probably replace it before installing a new street. This lift station is only used during high-flow events. It's not a everyday use. Ideally, we'd be able to eliminate it from the system. We talked to our I&amp;I consultant and they said for the time being that we need to maintain that. So a recommendation is to go ahead and replace that force main.
Any questions of Kyle? There be none. What are the council's wishes?
So moved, we approve.
So moved by Raymond. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any other discussion? There be none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is 3.2.3, the Northwest Industrial Park Stormwater Pond Change Order. And back to you, Kyle.
The change here, the pond was originally designed, this is part of the Viricon Expansion, was originally designed a few years ago. We were under a pretty tight timeline to get it out for bids. During that time, we had the, our stormwater consultant, Stan Tech, look at the design and they found a way to increase the amount of water that got into the pond and thereby reduce the peak elevation downstream at Bridge Street. The cost to make, and they made some other recommendations that saved a few dollars too. So in total, the increase was $67,420.20. And this will lower the peak elevation at Bridge Street and lower the peak rate of water flowing through the industrial parks. So staff recommends approval of this. State grants and the TIF funds will pay for the change order.
Any questions for Kyle? There be none. What are the council's wishes?
We'll move for approval.
Motion by Les. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. Any further discussion? There be none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is 3.2.4, the DNR Flood Grant, the purchase of properties located at 215 La Monde Road and 223 La Monde Road. And we'll go to Troy.
In June, the DNR awarded the city $500,000 in additional grant money for the removal of homes in the floodplain. At that time, the council also approved the purchase of the property at 321 La Monde Road using those additional funds. There still would be grant money available to buy additional homes in the floodplain and all the funds must be used by June 30th of next year. The grant program is a voluntary program and certain criteria must be met. The city has an agreement with the property owner to purchase the properties at 215 and 223 La Monde Road for $160,000 contingent on city council approval. And both properties are owned by the same owner. The closing for 215 La Monde Road would not happen until the end of February of next year as per the agreement with the property owner. There is a possibility for one of the homes to be moved. This grant, for this grant, all expenses are covered by the grant and therefore the house can be demolished or moved by a private contractor. The property would still have to be owned and maintained by the city after the house is removed as stipulated in the grant. And as we've mentioned before, in this area, basements of both these homes were filled with floodwater in 2010 when we had the flood. This area along La Monde Road has experienced flooding numerous times and the best long-term plan for this area is to remove the homes from the floodplain as stated in our hazard mitigation plan. The grant would cover all the costs associated with the purchase, demolition, and removal of the homes and site restoration, including any city labor if that's needed. The city would have to upfront the costs of out-of-pocket expenses before being reimbursed by the grant and then we would have to maintain the property after the homes are removed. This is more of a natural area and we have, you know, we'll mow it once or twice during the summer. So staff would recommend approval to purchase and remove the two houses in the floodplain at 215 and 223 La Monde Road.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions for Troy? Raymond?
If they move that house out, would that be an income come back to the grant or what would happen? If somebody say, "I'll buy it for $500 or $1,000,"
What we'll do is we'll go to bids on just the removal of the homes and then site restoration. So if a contractor wants to move it, that should be reflected in his bid. If he wants to demo it, that will reflect his bid. We're just looking at the lowest bid to have the houses removed and having the site restored. So under either scenario, it should not affect the grant at all.
What about the outbuildings? Will they all be removed?
Yep, that'll be part of the bid package too, is have those removed as well.
Any other questions? What the council's wishes?
So moved, we approve.
Motion to approve by Raymond. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any discussion? There be none. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next up is 3.3.1, mountain biking in Kaplan's Woods. And we're going to go to Corky Evelyn. Corky has some words of wisdom for us.
First official council meeting and I forgot the council minutes in my proposal, so that's, should impress you. This isn't new. I have that part here. The mountain biking group, which is a lot of them here tonight The mountain biking group, which is a lot of them here tonight, came to the park board back in April, and then in May, we met in a study session with you on the issue of installing some mountain biking trails within Kaplan's Woods. And the Park and Rec Board approved that unanimously, and they're asking for your approval to move forward with that. If you have some technical questions, they're here as a group, I believe Scott's here, to any technical questions. Their plan is pretty straightforward, as I put in my memo. Their plan is to build the trails with volunteer group and maintain them with volunteer group, starting small with a loop in the front of Kaplan's Woods, and then eventually developing throughout the woods in future years. Details of sites, signage, and those kind of things, we'd ask for your approval pending staff approval when we meet with them and go through this project with them. And we're very excited about bringing that into Kaplan's Woods. It exists today, but in a freestyle manner where people are biking through that park using that. So, we think there's a number of advantages that were listed out in that proposal in front of you as well. And so, answer any questions, and in those that I can't answer, I'll ask the group to respond as well.
Corky, what's the timeline for starting this project?
I'll call Scott up and...
Well, we really have...
Come up to the microphone, please.
Scott, office, we have delayed starting kind of the association because we wanted to see what your thoughts were as a council. So, our thoughts are to go at whatever rate is the right rate. I mean, when we first started doing this, we're saying, "Oh, we don't want, you know, we don't want to rush this process, we don't want to do it faster than it needs to happen." I would imagine that if we got approval, we would probably have the folks come down yet this summer and at least have the trail laid out by this fall sometime. That would mean that it would probably be a trail that you could ride on a little bit, but it probably wouldn't be in its finished state till next spring sometime, and that would be just that first part in the first loop. Again, we want to work with the Minnesota Mountain Bike Organization and the International Association, because the issue is, we want to make this to be a low-impact, environmentally sound trail system that doesn't require a lot of...
So, if we approve this, then Corky, when they propose a trail in there, is that something then that will go back to the park board prior to them doing the trail, or how will that work?
No, the Park and Rec Board has approved it, again, pending that the staff approval. They'll work with staff, and we'll also be bringing in the state group to work with us, and we'll lay out a path where it should be done, the best possible location and the least impact. And so, not knowing all those details, we're just asking for approval before they come down and start that. If you want more to come your way after that's been done, we can surely do that. The park board has put it, pretty much put it in the staff's hands to work with the group in moving this forward. So, they're talking of, you know, eventually seven to eight miles hopefully throughout the park. We're talking maybe a mile, two miles in the first loop, and going into it fairly slow, they need to, they'll also be organizing their trail association, their nonprofit group probably, and different things like that, so they can apply for grants in the future, and moving this forward.
Raymond?
I don't think you talked a mile and a half or two, what's, is there a five years you'd like to be, or three years? Do you have any long-range goals or plans?
The long-range goal that I would have would be to say, if we could get somewhere in the five to seven mile of trail, which is reasonable, I've mountain biked lots of places, then we would be in a place where it would be a destination. I mean, folks from Rochester would come over here, folks from Albert Lee, Austin, you know, it would be a draw. A miles worth of trail won't be a draw, it would be much more of a kind of, let's see how this works with the park folks. And again, I mean, the studies on mountain bike trails, they actually revert back quite quickly if they're just abandoned, because they're narrow and they don't, we'd make a point of not doing much damage to the soil and creating...
Are you going to try to do a fund drive locally to start it, or what's your...
Some, yeah. Our thought is to probably make a Minnesota nonprofit rather than a 501(c)(3), just because it's way expensive and not probably worth it for the amount of money that we'd need to do the project with, so.
Les?
Thank you. One of the things I am concerned about is the safety where you cross the walking paths with the bike paths, and that, to be assured that the proper signage for the safety of both the bikers and the walkers, that nobody would be impacted by this. I think it's a great idea, but I would like to see, you know, where my concern is with the safety of the people that are not aware that you're out there riding.
Yes, and we're fully aware of that, as well as the park board and as well as the group, and that was one of the first things that were brought up. What's happening now today out there, like I said, is pretty much a free-for-all. People are mountain biking, they're mountain biking on the hiking trails, which cause conflict of coming up onto a biker, and they're also going cross-country or cross-woods through the trails as well into some same areas that they'd be building the trails. And so, the plan would be is to make a trail that is safer than probably exists today out there, but it'll be a designated trail, so of course you want it to be. And so, where trails come up to, the mountain biking trails come up to the walking trail, now they'll just take a straight shot over a hill or down a hill and down onto the trail and cross it or jump onto it. In the plans, as you'll see them when they come forward, is they'll be making turns before they come to the trail, so they have to slow down the bike and make a turn before it actually meets the cross. Well, actually, they'll have signs up as well, but everybody knows sometimes they aren't always followed, so just putting a sign up saying "Path in front of you, slow down," and there'll be more than that. The trails will actually be built so they're safely, will be safely crossed when they do meet a bike, a walking trail.
Is there signage for the pedestrian that makes him aware that there is a crossing there?
Yes, they'll be signing both for the hiking, walking trails, as well as the mountain biking trail, as I understand it, and there's standards out there, state and nationally, that they'll be using to do this.
Yeah, this would not be a unique situation where there's trails that have to cross trails. There are design criteria that people do to say, "Okay, how do you make a trail crossing that's safe?" And that's part of the reason to bring in somebody rather than just us to design the actual trail, is to say, "Well, how would we set that up in such a way?" Because there's signage, there's also just ways you can make the trail work where it does a crossing, so that it makes people as aware as you possibly can. I mean, does that mean you prevent all possible things?
No.
No, but I do think it's, there are design things, and it's probably also the reason to go a little slow on this and say, you know, essentially put it in place, get a trail crossing, or maybe two in place, and say, "Okay, how is this, how is this working? What's the impact?" I mean, if, and if we get to a year or two down the line and say, "Well, this is a disaster," that would let it grow back up and revert back.
Well, I guess with that, I would kind of like to see some progress reports, how it's going, and, you know.
Yeah, that should be very possible, because I don't think we'll be getting into any actual construction or building the trails this fall yet. I'd be surprised if we do, we'll come forward to you, but otherwise, as it progresses, we'll bring it forward. One thing that isn't mentioned in there, and I'm not sure if it was in the benefits of it or not, is the trails in the winter time. If you're a cross-country skier, you're probably full of aware, aware of the problems in the winter time that we hear on hikers on the cross-country ski trails, which are the hiking trails during the summer, fall, spring months. And we're thinking that this might even be a help for that, that we can make this, you know, one snowmobile width-wide, the trail itself, it's very narrow, that we could pack these trails and actually advertise them for hiking trails in the winter time to try to keep more people off the cross-country ski trails in the winter time. So, we're hoping, thinking an advantage might be there as well.
Is the biking trail wide enough for two bikes side by side?
No.
No, single track.
Single track.
And the other question, do they have to remove any trees to make them?
No, we won't move any trees. We'll be making the trail through buckthorn and things that shouldn't be removed.
You know, as a neighbor of Kaplan's Woods, I see this as a very positive thing. It's going to get the bikers off the main trails, the ones that want a more challenging workout, and with the safety guards in place, I think it's going to be a very safe thing. It's going to bring another source of recreation into that park. I would, I would like to see us go forward with that.
Any other questions?
With that, I will make a motion to approve this, and wish you well, and don't chase out all the deer.
Your motion from Les, and second from Raymond. Any discussion? There be none, all in favor, vote by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, and good luck. Okay, next up, resolutions. The first one is 3.4.1, Resolution 69-13, participate in Minnesota Water Agency Response Network, and we'll go to Kyle for this.
Good evening. This is the, would replace mutual aid agreements between government agencies for our utilities, for wastewater and stormwater utilities. So, it would allow us to, if we had a flood or an emergency in town, to contact the Minnesota duty officer, and they would in turn contact other communities that may have resources available for us. Staff feels it's a good program to participate in. If it, we don't have to send something if we're requested, if we have it available, we can send it. And also, we can withdraw from the agreement with 60 days' notice. So, with that, staff recommends approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
So moved.
Motion by Raymond to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is 3.4.2, Resolution 70-13, land donation from Jeff Fock, and we'll go to Chris.
Thank you, Greg. We're asking council to approve a resolution accepting a donation of a parcel, Outlot B in Falkland Woods. The property owner approached me with the, with interest to donate it to the city. You can see the parcel on your, should be in your packet there. It's adjacent to city-owned parkland and would be suitable in the future for a possible trail, or can also be left as just a natural green space. City would, or staff would recommend approval.
Any questions for Chris?
I've got a question for Corky here. On the map, I'm looking at the blue area to the north, is that, is that a, is that a water area we're looking at there?
The area right up there in the corner, yeah, that's the, I don't know what the official name is, we call it Creasel Pond.
That's the official name.
Creasel Stormwater Pond.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Nate to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Les. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is 3.4.3, Resolution 71-13, high school drop-off zone, and we'll go to Kyle for this.
Good evening. We received a request from the Oatana Public Schools to create a drop-off zone in front of the high school along Grove Street through their safety and security review at the high school. They would like to make the west entrance along Grove Street their main entrance for drop-off during the day, and have requested that we sign that from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on school days, and that's similar to the parking on the adjacent side streets. The language on those signs, those are actually eight to four, but we felt that we needed to move this up until 7:00 a.m. in front of the school. So, I believe there's a representative from the school district here tonight if you have any questions for them, but staff would recommend approval.
I have a question, is this just for motor vehicles, parents dropping off their children, or it will allow for buses to drop off there?
Jeff Miller, Assistant Principal of Oatana High School, and yes and yes. So, yes, it would be for parents and for students, but if necessary, we also thought it would be a great place to load and unload buses as well, because it's part of an overall package of changes that are happening, and so, the main entrance will be the lone door that will be open during the school day, that'll be accessible by anybody. But if we continue to drop off students during the day on School Street, which is traditional, if you have a field trip or something like that, it'll be important that the teacher is there so that they'll have the proxy card to enter that Indian Door entrance, but oftentimes that isn't always the case, and so by moving the drop-off zone when you need to to Grove Avenue, it allows that student, the group of students to enter the high school without having somebody there with a proxy card to get in.
Sure. Thank you. Any other questions?
Jeff, I've got a question. With that being the only doors that are going to be open, people that want to, wish to park, going to be in the school for 45 minutes, an hour, where is the closest parking for that situation?
Be the south lot, so there are 10 spots, I believe, 10 stalls that are...
The tennis court lot.
Yeah, adjacent to the tennis courts.
Okay.
Any further questions?
I will make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Les, a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is 3.4.4, Resolution 72-13, to establish municipal state highways and revoke municipal state highway designation, and we'll go to Kyle for this.
Good evening. The city has a little over five miles of undesigned mileage for the municipal state aid system. 20% of our total mileage can be designated as municipal state aid streets. I believe these miles that were undesigned were being reserved for a future east beltline. There is no penalty for moving the designation unless we spend money on the route, so we feel that we should designate these routes. We can move them around in the future, there would be no penalty if we don't use any state aid money on the route. And the one that we're removing is actually a non-existing portion that we don't feel will ever connect, or at least not in the foreseeable future. So, we would have a small increase in our state aid revenue by doing this, and we do recommend approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Nate to approve, is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Les. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is 3.4.5, Resolution 73-13, set the date for a public hearing for an MIF grant application for the Vierricon Inc. Expansion Project, and we'll go to Troy.
In our development agreement with Vierricon, we had pledged assistance in looking for and assisting in any grant funding through the state that might be possible for the expansion project that they're working on now and in future phases of that. So, we've been working with Vierricon on a Minnesota Investment Fund Small Cities Development Program Grant, and that's through the Minnesota Department of Economic, or Employment and Economic Development, and this would be for funds to help with their expansion project. It would be eligible for some of the equipment that they're purchasing for this expansion, this grant money would be. For the submittal of the application, a public hearing is needed, and we're requesting a public hearing for August 20th. There are some consulting fees associated with putting the application together, and those costs would be paid for by Vierricon as stated in our development agreement. So, staff would recommend setting the public hearing for August 20th.
Any questions for Troy? There be none, what are the council's wishes?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Nate to approve a public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And 3.4.6, Resolution 74-13, declare inadequacy of petition and ordering preparation of report for an alley between 18th Street Southwest and Oakdale Street Southwest, and we'll go to Kyle.
No, actually, it's me.
We're going to you, Chris, okay.
There is, on, Chapter 429 is a statute that... There is, on, Chapter 429 is a statute that deals with assessments, and that statute allows for property owners to petition for certain improvements, and that's what's before you tonight, is we've received a petition by property owners by at least 35% that has been verified by our office that they are the, in fact, owners of the property. And our purpose here tonight is to consider taking on the construction of that alley in the next construction period. I think Kyle can talk about the status of the alley is certainly in need of repair and one that should be addressed. Now, budget impact for the city is our policy requires the city to pay half. So, the next step in this process is to ask our city engineer to prepare a feasibility study and bring it back to council for approval, for your consideration for approval. So, this simply acknowledges officially the petition and authorizes the city engineer to prepare a feasibility study. So, staff would recommend approval.
Okay, any questions for Chris, Raymond?
Would this project be done this year? Would this project be done yet this year?
No, it would actually be for next year.
Other questions?
I'll move approval.
A motion by Raymond to approve, is there a second? Second by Les, any further discussion? There be none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That's the end of our resolutions, we're now at the time of the meeting for public comment. Please limit your comments to two minutes and to items not on the agenda. I'm not sure we have anybody here to do that. So, there be none, we'll go to committee or council reports, and first up would be Councilman Burbank.
I don't have anything from Ward 3 tonight.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Rainey.
Nothing from Ward 4.
Councilman Trulson.
Just wanted to congratulate the mayor on his award that he received up north, very deserving of it, of all the economic developments you do, and every day, and every day, and every day, that's a, probably a very deserving award, so wanted to thank you for that.
Councilman Dodson.
I have nothing to add.
Councilman Abraham.
Well, thank you for taking over for me tonight, I do appreciate it. I do look forward to meeting a number of the people tomorrow night on the Night to Unite. We'll be planning on going out with one of the officers from the city police department and meeting as many people as we can, so look forward to that. And again, also congratulations, Mr. Mayor, on your fantastic award.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor, you have anything, any comments for us tonight?
Only thing is, the Steel County Free Fair is coming up, and all that good fair food sounds good, so everybody have a great time.
All right, and Chris?
Just a reminder to council, for Night to Unite, if you would give us some feedback on the parties that you wish to visit, I know Jeanette handed out a sheet of the parties that we know of as of today, and let us know which ones you would like to attend, we'll try and pair up the council members with the appropriate officers when you go visit.
Chris, are we gonna do coffee with council fair week?
You know, that's a good point. I had penciled in, we had discussed previously to do coffee with the council during the fair, the Saturday of the fair, 9:00 at the Aurora. Is that still the council's wishes to do? I think it would be kind of unique and a good way to, and again, they have great pie, so.
I'm gonna run the 5K, but I'll have to not do that now.
Until you're heartbroken.
Just had one other thing, the other morning, an unexpected, neighbor thought I was getting robbed at my house at 5:30, they thought somebody, I had the TV on early and they were walking through my house with a flashlight, and somebody knocked on my door, and there were three policemen in my front yard, and so that was a real wake-up call, so like to thank them for the effort they did that morning at 5:30 in the morning.
Okay, all right, Les.
One question is, what time should we be down at the law enforcement center for the...
I would say 4:30, but I'll verify that with Keith and send out an email, because usually, a lot of the parties start at 5:00, 5:30, so I'll double-check and send you out an email tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, and Les, thanks for letting me sit in your chair tonight. Hopefully, I did you proud, and I hope things improve for you.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second? Motion by Kevin, who's the second by?
Raymond.
Raymond, oh, you guys are double-take, even me. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned, thank you.